Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, city officials, and also our home audience. I'd like to welcome you all to the December 27th City Council meeting. We have eight items on our agenda this evening. At this time, Mr. Paulson, would you please continue with roll call of members?
Clay.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Patrick.
Here.
Proll.
Yes.
Tatten.
There.
Thank you, Ms. Paulson. At this time, if everybody would, please stand for the first reading.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from the previous meeting has been distributed for review. Everybody agrees? Do we have a motion to accept these minutes?
No, I have correction.
Okay.
Yes. I have correction reference to Hugh Kearney will have a financial report there soon. It was stated in their, not financial, planning facility report, was stated in the minutes. And what I indicated was that I hope that we would be able to work on the facility plan for 2017. It's not that I will handle.
Not that you're handling it, but you're acknowledging to go forward.
You do okay, yes.
Okay.
Well, where is it? Wishful thinking.
Well, it says that you hope to have a, you know, left out, you hope somebody could provide.
I just don't want people to think that.
All right, we understand.
The intent was not clear, so I will clear up the intent there.
So do we have a motion to accept the minutes with that correction by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mrs. Gray? Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Tatten.
Yes.
And the minutes with the correction has been accepted. At this time, we have reports of our committees. Who would like to go first? Mr. Proll?
The Finance Committee has one item on tonight's agenda. This is item number two, which is at second reading. It is an ordinance to make appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Chillicothe during the fiscal year beginning January 1st of 2017. This legislation, of course, deals with our budget. We've held Finance Committee meetings to discuss the details, and we've also had individual committee meetings to focus on things like utilities and safety services. And through these, we hammered out the main issues, and we have the budget that you see before you today. So at the appropriate time, I will ask that we waive the three read rule so that we can pass this before the end of the year. But before we can do that, I do however need to announce that there have been some slight changes to the budget in amount. If you look, there's a packet that you have handed out to you by the auditor, and the top section is the piece that I'm going to ask that we substitute by amendment, or amend by substitution in a moment. But in the second section that you see has markups telling you where the changes to the budget are. And you see that it's about $25,000, a little bit more than that, in areas such as the treasurer's office. The treasurer for the city had not been taking the city insurance and now will be taking the city insurance. This change is reflected in the new numbers. There's also some changes down under street construction and repair. Also, if you flip over to the Safety Levy Capital, there are some corrections there. And the parks and rec is reduced, actually, because there was a number that was an amount duplicated in the request. So that comes down. I'm sure the auditor will go over a few of these numbers in full report. But for this to become something that we can vote on tonight, we do need to have a motion to substitute, amend by substitution, and I would like to take that motion.
I have that motion submitted by Ms. Patrick. Roll call on the motion to amend by substitution, the items listed in the paperwork here.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Tatten.
Yes.
And the corrections have been amended?
Yes. Okay. I appreciate that. Now, if there are any questions at this time on those changes, I'd be happy to hear those.
I don't have a question on the amendment, but there's been discussion whether we're voting on a temporary budget or permanent budget. So what does this represent?
The one that was written is permanent. This is written as permanent.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So at the appropriate time, I will be asking that we please waive the three read rule. Now, I also, this item is not before Finance or before the Technology Committee, but I did want to address item number eight, which Safety Services will address, I'm sure, later. But I did want to say that this ordinance, which is at first reading to appropriate $890 for the cost related to updating the email exchange program in the law director's office. This item deals with moving their emails to exchange. I would like some discussion on this and would not support passage tonight. I just want to make my feelings known on that. It may be something that is very helpful, but without any details, I am not sure that this is necessarily the right thing to do. I'd also like to know what some of our other departments are using email-wise to make sure that we're in alignment and that this decision makes sense. So my two cents there. Decade, working with technology, I always just like to chime in.
Okay. Thanks. Just to answer, as far as I understand your question, and especially considering that you are tech-related, and if you have a question, it is possible to have, you know, a committee meeting, you know, just at the beginning of the year, you know, we can have a committee meeting as far as asking sort of if there are any questions, or any other possible work groups that could be involved.
Appreciate it. Well, that concludes my report.
Mr. Proll? I'm sorry.
That can go right in.
Item number three, is that a finance item as well?
It was an assignment given out for two weeks ago. I believe it is. I just noticed that this is just one of the housekeeping. This is, yeah, this is one of the ones that, yeah, this is just a housekeeping item, so, yeah, that is something that was brought to me, and we just went ahead and looked at that.
It was given out before last meeting. It was assigned at 16-137.
Okay.
Yeah. And it was finance.
We'll talk about that with you more whenever I come tomorrow.
That's fine. Okay.
Will that be passed tonight?
Yeah, we probably ought to.
It's something that we do every year through the year, and I'll give you more detail on it when we get to that point.
What, the Finance Committee Chair needs to waive the three read rule at the appropriate time?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll waive the three read rule now as well.
Anybody else have a committee report? Mr. Tatten.
Thank you, President Arnold.
Okay.
I have a few.
Okay.
Number four. This is the appropriation of $14,100 for the placement of two streetlights in the Stone Ridge Drive area, with money coming from the Reserve Community Association. This actually was passed for one light back in 2007. It was approved by council then for one light, but never was appropriated funds. Now it's coming up, they need two lights. I believe we're going to go three readings on this, because there has been more discussion, and there were some questions brought up. But, so if anybody's got any questions, Beth, do you want to throw anything in here since it's your area, or?
No, I just support the placement of the two streetlights. They need them for safety, and the area is really dark.
Okay. But, like I said, I'll let this go all three reads unless there's any questions come up. Number five is mine, too. Engineering Committee. This authorizes a restriction of certain vehicles on the section of South Watts Street. We had a serious meeting, and I showed where the road in this area was only 30 feet wide, and there's a safety issue since we have traffic coming bookways and also parking on both sides. We all agreed at the time that we need to sort of sign each other, but I found out that in order for the police to actually ticket for violation, there has to be legislation through council, and proper signage will be put up in this area. Yes, sir, you got something to say?
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
I think that what I asked, Jeff has recently had a conversation with the owners of the grain mill, and I think that they were very cooperative. They just basically said they want to be able to tell their drivers what to do, and there's been some uncertainty. And so I think that I certainly support this, and I think keeping them in the loop will aid in that.
Okay, we also need Carmen to get ahold of, Mr. Carmen to get ahold of the GPS people so they won't send them down Watts Street.
Will there be any sort of signage?
Yes.
Temporary prior to saying that there will be changes taking effect on such and such a date?
We've never actually done that. I mean, it's a possibility.
I think you could pass the legislation effective any date, probably.
Do you wish for me to go ahead and pass it tonight?
I don't think there's that much urgency to wait two weeks. I don't know if there's any, did you, have you had public feedback? I mean, all the public feedback that I've got would be in support of it.
Yes, and I think I've heard that the.
We have reached out to the. The owners of the mill, just to ask if they would be able to, I guess, have some input on it at some point. I don't know if anybody has reached out to them, or?
Well, we did have a pretty good discussion on this before, okay? And also, I talked to them twice.
Okay.
So, I mean, and I let them know that this is research I did through the state and with our engineering department. And we felt that it was an unsafe area for semi-traffic. Now, there were some questions about bread trucks, pop trucks, and whatever, but the signage, and you need to make sure on the signage on this that it's properly worded as far as the dual-axle semi-traffics.
I'm sorry. I only asked the question with regard to the signage because this change, this is, this represents a change in traffic pattern?
Well, not necessarily. There has been temporary signage up.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not like it's something's changed overnight.
I don't have a copy of the legislation. Does it have urgency later?
No.
No.
So it wouldn't go into effect in 30 days anyway.
It wouldn't go into effect until 30 days, right. Traffic ordinances, changing directions and things like that, almost always are regular legislation to allow that 30 days.
Perfect. So I think that's, I think that's a good, I support the legislation. I don't, I don't have a strong opinion on passage tonight, or, you know, I'm sure that the residents of Watts Street are even going to pass.
Right.
If you think you need more feedback, I'd be okay with waiting. Either way, we will, we will spend those 30 days doing an awareness campaign.
Right. All right. Engineering Committee also has number six. And a lot of people were confused about this one, and it's a inspection that we need to do on fire and smoke dampers. And if anybody knows what a damper is in a chimney, that's pretty easy, but also in these big buildings, there's air dampers in the system for the airflow. Luke, if you want to elaborate a little bit on this?
Yeah, basically, there's state and national regulations, and we have a couple buildings that this would affect. There'd probably be the transit building, the new municipal court, and I think that's it. Essentially, it has to do firewalls and just, some of these older buildings, like this building doesn't, wouldn't have the need, but it meets, you know, the standards for state and national, and it just provides a safer standard for city employees and the public using those facilities. I think it's, I think the maximum we estimated total dampers across all buildings would be something like 40, and I think the regulation's called for inspection in three years or something along those lines. It's just not a large burden, I think, in a bigger area or place where you have newer buildings. But still, for the, you know, they build them in, but then if they're not inspected properly, it's kind of useless to have, so. Does that help?
Yes.
The formside inspection, so.
I think that the ordinance itself identifies who's qualified to do it, and lists the criteria or specifically, it would not be, it would not be conducted by the city itself.
Okay.
All right.
It only applies to city owned buildings. It's not a citywide.
This is, actually was called the workforce legislation. This has to do with anybody doing construction work within the city limits. This is, actually does two or three things. One, it's guaranteeing, well, hopefully guaranteeing that we get quality work done by the companies that we have bids from, and also, I think it helps hire local people to work. And that's, I think, one of the things that really was one of the most important things, that hopefully we get local people to do work for these jobs in the city limits. Luke, would you like to add anything else to this one?
Yeah, this was proposed, I think, at the end of last year, and we had some language. Some of the main issues with the language, especially in anticipation of some of the street construction that we're near, one of the main problems I had with the language was that it basically said, after the lowest or best bid selected, then we will vet the company, and if they meet all of the criteria, good. If they don't, we'll go to the next one in line, or, you know, review at the time, as opposed to, the companies that bid have to meet certain criteria, so then once, you know, that tells you upfront whether or not they should, we should be accepting their bids at all. That was, I think, the main, one of the main differences. The language was pretty much the same as what went through committee at this time last year. But I think Council Tatten's right, you know, defines, it's not just Chillicothe, but a local region, quality work. We, particularly because of this street levy money, being able to make sure that we get the best bids and where the whole people can, we haven't, we haven't had serious issues, but we want to make sure that the quality of work that we get is good and that the money stays as local as possible.
Thank you. Matt Cluusel, report.
Thank you, Mr. Tatten. Any other committee reports? Mr. Florima?
Thank you, President Arnold. Just to touch again on item number eight, I just, Councilman Proll had questions, which I don't have a problem in having at least a committee meeting to clear it out, any, or get answers for, or anyone else that has questions. Would anyone have an issue with the first available date of Wednesday, January 6th? No, Wednesday, January 4th, at 6:00. Would that work? Can we do that in council chamber?
Here in chambers?
Yeah.
Okay. What time is it?
6:00. We can get that done and answered before the meeting.
Committee date announcement, okay.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Florima. Any other committee reports at this time? I'm not seeing any. We will move on to reports of our officials. Mayor Feen.
Thank you, President Arnold. I would touch on item two, the permanent budget for 2017. As everyone knows, I originally proposed that we pass a temporary budget to get through the first quarter of 2017. The process that we went about was essentially the same whether it would have been a temporary or full budget. There were at least a couple people that voiced concerns and requests to pass a permanent budget, which I have no objection to. So what you have in front of you is the permanent budget for the year. As Councilman Proll mentioned, we had several committee meetings touching on individual departments, staffing in particular, and the safety services. And so I wholeheartedly support this budget. I believe that it's important that as we go into the next year, we do some of the things that I mentioned earlier, one of which was a regular budget review session led by the auditor, so that we can all stay on top of finances. We all know that there's staffing requests outstanding, and I think we all believe in the importance of those staffing requests. And then there are a few other things that we'll need to revisit, that I would probably classify as seasonal or elective type appropriations, like this annual appropriation doesn't have an appropriation for next year's week, like that, that kind of thing. And so whether that's done in the first quarter of the year, closer to fall, those are the types of things that I think it was Councilwoman Patrick who mentioned, you know, the importance of passing a permanent budget and then revisiting items that weren't included. So I would include those sort of one-off items as those items that will be revisited as we have in the past. So I would support tonight's passage of permanent budget and support moving forward with regular budget review sessions as we've done in the past. I think it's useful for all of us, really. I think it's useful for the departments. I've had conversations with many, well, all three of the unions about even making sure that they're as informed as possible, the same goes for the rest of us. And then the only other item I have to comment on is the current status of the Health District. There was a pretty significant meeting in the District Advisory Committee a couple weeks ago. I appreciate council's participation in that meeting. Most, if not all, council was there. Most, if not all, every township trustee in the county was there. I think two of the three county commissioners was there. It served as an opportunity for, I think, a lot of the county to realize what's, what's on the line with the Health District, and for a lot of us, myself included, we've learned a lot about the services that the Health District provides. So just as an update, following that meeting, a second meeting was set. Councilman Clay and Councilwoman Corpern, one of myself, Safety Service Director Carmen attended, a couple of the commissioners and trustees. The Health District took us through the budget line by line, and have essentially committed that they have the funding to make it through May. May is important because that's when a levy will go back on the ballot in front of the whole county. Excuse me. And we will find out in May if a joint Health District is funded once again. They have agreed to sell off their biggest asset, which is their home health business, essentially. Councilman Clay asked a question during, during that meeting, well, how many, how many Health Districts in Ohio have their own home health businesses? And I think the answer was three, us included. So that kind of told us something. I think it's very difficult for a government entity to run that type of business. And so really, one of the main ways that they're able to get cash flow through May is selling that asset. Their proposal, actually, they run out of cash in December of 2016. The important thing to me is that they have cash through May. If that levy doesn't pass, the city is going to have to do some pretty intense introspection because, as you all know, that levy passed within the city limits. It did not pass in the county. And so if a similar fate were to fall for the Health District in May, which I don't believe it will, but if it would, the city would have to take a strong look at removing itself from the joint Health District and moving forward as some Health District. And it's not the first time I said that. I said that at the Health District meeting. The commissioners know that I, that we, you know, we would have an obligation to look at that. But that being said, I will wholeheartedly be supporting the levy in May, and I would encourage you and all the citizens of Chillicothe to do the same. The services provided are vast and essential to this community. So we seem to have avoided a pretty dire situation for the time being, and will work hard to make sure that the levy passes in May. Any questions on the Health District? And with that, I wish everybody happy holidays and Merry Christmas, and it being our last meeting before the new year, a Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to a busy, busy, busy 2017. I've got a lot of fun committee assignments waiting to go, so it's going to be a good year, and I'm looking forward to it. That's Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor Feen. Now we've moved to our auditor, Ms. Crystal Stutnider.
I was going to talk about two items on the agenda. Item number two, the budget. What I passed out tonight is a packet, and I'm going to kind of repeat what Councilman Proll said. The first page is kind of a clean copy of all the changes that's been made. The second page will show you the differences that changes. If you look at the treasury and the general fund, there will be an increase of $25,000 in more health insurance. That is something new that we just recently got the paperwork for, so that's why it wasn't included previously. That is just a recent change in the agenda. The rest of them I talked about last week. Street construction change that will increase by $42,000 to pay for the work that was done out on Bridge Street. That was passed in 2015 that we agreed to pay, so you'll see the increase there. And then the Safety Levy, Capital Police, there was $24,000 of computers that was admitted the first time. That was originally on the capital list, so it's not additional, it just was admitted from the ordinance. So that's included now. Parks and Rec, there was a duplicate entry there, so that actually decreased by $74,000. Those are the changes that you'll see on the new ordinance. The second page is the capital list. There was no changes to that. I just provided it as additional backup so you could trace the numbers to the ordinance. And then there was also no changes to the revenue production, but I just wanted you to see that, because I kind of want you to talk about it as well. So if you have any questions on that, you can let me know. The next item I was going to talk about is item number three. That is a housekeeping item, and it's done at the end of every year. What we do is we take a look at the revenue and expenses of every one of the accounts, which we do that all year round anyways, but if we notice that expenses, the projected revenue isn't going to come in. if we notice that expenses, the projected revenue isn't going to come in as strong as we thought, then we have to notify the county of a decrease in the resources. Then we take a look at the expenses, and we have to make sure that the expenses don't exceed our resources, so, there were several accounts there, and the main one there is the bus account, we've talked about that at several meetings as well, so that we will unappropriate nine hundred, well, we decrease revenue by 950, and there will be an appropriate, an appropriation of 950, which will be an appropriate balance of $50,000, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Stutnider. Our treasurer is not available this evening, leaves the report from me, and I don't really have a whole lot to say, other than just to throw out some statistics since we seem to have a lot in front of us this evening, we've had 140 committee assignments this year with resolutions and assignments, I think we passed somewhere between, what, 115 and 120, I don't have an exact count on that, so we still have a few assignments that we didn't move forward with for some various reasons, and we still have a few that we're going to be working on again next year if we move forward with, and other than that, I'd just like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, so, thanks for getting us through this year, everybody. At this point, we go to audi, oh, I'm sorry, at this point, we give the audience participation. We do have a sign-in sheet, I don't think anybody signed in this evening, but if you do want to address council, please come up to the microphone, give your name and your address, we do have a Council Rule 21 that limits each speaker to five minutes, if you get close to the five minutes, I will give you some sort of an indication that you, about a minute away, that you can wrap up your presentation, and anybody that wishes to speak is more than welcome to, does anybody like to address council this evening? Okay, not seen anybody, we'll move forward, does anybody have old business they would like to bring up this evening? Any reports on any committee assignments that are still pending, that are coming forward? Anything you'd like to bring up going on with the city at this point? Ms. Patrick?
I'll go ahead and report on two outstanding assignments, well, actually, three that I have, the first one is stormwater, creating a stormwater utility, please carry that forward to next year, the other one was Douglas Avenue, there's an issue with sewer and water connections with the business down there, and the owner, it's Jim Phillips, was trying to decide what's best for him at this point, so it's in the process, there's been discussion with the law director back and forth, and the final one is the one I just received, looking to city council terms, if it would be better to go to four-year terms, and please just carry them all forward.
Very good, all right, thank you. Anybody else have any reports, yes, Ms. Gray?
I don't have anything specifically to report with the special committee to look at the non-discrimination, I would request that it be carried forward to, into 2017 as well.
Okay, very good, all right, yes, Mr. Gray?
City Services. That's okay. City Services, we do have one item that is open, and that was, the original discussion focused on the armory, but that is part of a larger discussion that we are expected to have on the future of our city facilities, to Dr. Kearney's point, I believe that the intent right now is to work that in conjunction with the assignment for a strategic plan and the Finance Committee beginning next year, so we'd like to carry that forward, the two of those will tie in together, so that hopefully we can develop a strategic plan and a facilities plan next year for the city of Chillicothe.
That'd be great, that's really good. Anybody else have anything, yes, Mr.-
I would, I would like to try to touch base on what David just mentioned with the strategic plan, that was Request 16-016, and I'd like to have that carried forward into the new year, and also, Assignment 16-108, which was to update the city's website, carried forward. And also, another one that we did not finish off, which was 16-017, dealing with whether or not we have a performance on it, so those could all be carried forward.
Anybody else have anything to report moving forward? I will, I do have a list that I would update showing the current status of all the assignments right now, what are still open, what's pending, what's been dropped, I will have a hard sheet to get to everybody next council meeting to start the year off with, but between now and then, I will make it out and email to, email it to everybody so you can look at it prior, and then we can kind of regroup after the first meeting, or at the first meeting, figure out where we're headed for this year, and also, continuing the list with the ones that, that you all just mentioned, so, if there's nothing else on old business, I will move forward to petitions and correspondence that were received by the clerk, do you have anything, Mr. Fawcett?
Mr. President, I don't have any petitions or correspondence to report on, but I just wanted to note that, as I indicated in the email I sent out, item one is at second reading status, and I apologize for the mistake I made at the last regular meeting, it had not received its second reading on February 22nd prior to being committed, so, it is correctly listed at second reading, if it is the desire of council to pass it tonight, that would need to be done on suspension delivery, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fawcett. Moving on now, we have new business, does anybody have any new business? Yes, Mrs. Gray?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Silk Corcoran.
I have motion to excuse Ms. Corcoran, seconded by Mr. Florina, roll call on that motion, please.
Clay?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Tattan?
Yes.
And we have excused Mrs. Corcoran for this evening. Any other new business, anybody would like to bring forward? Not seen any, we move to committee assignments, the only thing that I have is Mr. Florina's announcement for the committee assignment Wednesday, January the 4th, six o'clock here in the council chambers, if anybody has anything else to add to that at this point? Not seen it, we move on to legislation, so, Mr. Fawcett, whenever you're ready, item number one.
First reading, or, second reading of an ordinance amending and adopting rules of council for the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Item number two.
Second reading of amendments to make appropriation for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Chillicothe, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017, and declaring emergency, second reading.
Ms. Cole?
At this time, and so that we could pass this before the end of this year, I would ask that we please consider waiving the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mrs. Carron. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Tattan?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number three.
First reading of an ordinance removing unnecessary appropriations from the books of the city of Chillicothe in four funds, HUD, bus, revised postage, rotary, and fuel fund, and declaring emergency, first reading.
Ms. Cole?
For the reasons I mentioned earlier, I would like to ask at this time that we please waive the three-read rule.
Motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Ms. Patrick, roll call on that motion.
Clay?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Tattan?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number four, please.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $14,100 for the placement of two streetlights on Stone Ridge Drive, accepting $1,500 received from the Reserves Condominium Association for use to the cost of the streetlights, and declaring emergency, first reading.
And now we'll move on to the next meeting, item number five, please.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the restriction of certain vehicles on a section of South Watt Street, and placement of permanent signs on Watts, Watt and Main Streets within the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, first reading.
And that will move on to the next meeting, item number six.
First reading of an ordinance establishing a fire and smoke damper inspection program for buildings owned and operated by the city of Chillicothe, first reading.
And that will move on to the next meeting, item number seven, please.
First reading of an ordinance relative to competitive, competitive bidding for construction work to be let by the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, first reading.
And that will also move on to the next meeting, item number eight.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $890 for costs related to updating the email exchange within the law director's office, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
And that, that will move on to the next meeting. If nobody has anything else, this concludes our business for this evening, do we have a motion for adjournment by Mr. Florina, seconded by Mr. Clay, we roll call on that motion, please.
Clay?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Tattan?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and Happy New Year, everybody.